Mr. Caesar, how are you?
Good. How are you, Mick? How you doing?
Ah, you know, here we are. Did you guys have a break this week?
Just Friday and Monday we had off. We didn't have a full week. How about you?
Yeah, same thing. Just enough time to make you realize how exhausted you are. You could really use a break.
I was looking at our calendar for next year, Labor Day, the day after is a Jewish holiday, so we actually have a four-day weekend.
Right at the beginning, wow.
Yeah, it's like the day after Labor Day is one of the...
So those are always kind of tough when it hits a lot at the beginning of the year because you're trying to get into your groove and then out you go.
It's very dry in October with no days off, you know?
Uh, March, I was just looking at the calendar for March. I'm like, oh, gosh.
Yep.
A BMS.
That's why I have 100, 200 and something sick days. You get sick, you get a day off, you know?
Well, that's what happens. People get run down.
Yeah, you get tired. You know, you're not feeling well. You can take a day off. You know, that's the way.
Well, you have to sooner or later. I mean, especially nowadays.
Yep.
I'm gonna go grab myself a glass of water right back. I have to ask, you know, the pandemic does great things to people, but who am I? Walter, is that you?
Yeah, that's me. I'm just helping Vera get in. I believe she's in the audience.
Okay.
That was just what Kim and I were talking about.
Oh, is she one of these phone numbers?
Exactly.
About those two, okay.
They were literally just talking about that.
We were.
Um, I'll bring the...
Here she is.
Did you grab it?
Uh, Walter got her. I'm going to give her... And it didn't rename her. How come?
There she is. I see her at the bottom.
Oh, very good. Is that... As well?
So unmute.
Hello, Vera. We can hear you now.
Okay. All right, so stay muted or unmuted? Okay. All right.
There you are, Vera. We can see...
Did I hang up the phone? No.
Yeah, we can see you now, Vera.
Okay.
We can see and hear you. Excellent.
We can see and hear you, Vera. Yay!
...as it was, especially when I was coming up. And...
I got it.
Thanks, Kim.
Welcome.
Kim, I'm gonna call you again for a second here.
All right. Oh, he's in the audience, Mick. Mick, he's in the audience. Let's bring him in. There he is.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Berita.
Hi. Hi, everybody.
Hello, everybody.
Hey, Mick.
Hello. And hello, Mr. Alton. How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that's everything that we need. Anything else, Miss Renta?
No, I don't think so. I think we have her. I counted 13, so we're missing one. I don't know who that is. Oh, March. We're just missing March, but I guess we're ready to go.
Oh, she's not here? Okay. All right. Well, I'm sure she'll turn up. I'll call this meeting of Legislative Council to order at 7:07 PM. Ms. Renta, can you take the role, please?
Ms. Byers?
Here.
Ms. Bonnades? Mr. Caesar? Ms. Klaus? I see you. I see. I got you. Uh, Ms. Dolan?
Here.
Here. Present.
Ms. Horsley?
Here.
Ms. Gary? Gary, are you there?
I see her.
I see her. I'm gonna mark her present. She's... Mr. McDowell?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Present.
Swole Lewis? I see you. Ms. Shoemaker?
Present.
Mr. Weber?
Present.
Ms. Wetmore?
Here.
13 present, one absent.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Renta. Uh, we'll have our pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. I would keep in mind, you know, our victims of violence and our folks who have suffered loss due to COVID-19 pandemic. And is there... There has anyone else a sorrow or a family member or person they'd like for us to hold in our hearts that they care to name during their moment of silence? Okay. You know, actually, this being, we have our special guest, Ms. Morrison. Ms. Morrison, would you mind leading us in the pledge? We're gonna have to unmute yourself.
I pledge allegiance... To the flag...
Of the United States of America. And to the republic...
Public, which should stand. One... Under God...
Indivisible...
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. Morrison. It's a pleasure to have you here tonight. Thank you for taking the extra time.
My pleasure to be here.
Oh, Vera, do you have audio on your computer? Because that phone is giving horrible feedback when you...
Okay. So I... Yeah, let me just turn that...
Turn the volume of the phone down, maybe. Oh, ah.
Perhaps mute the phone?
Yeah, something. As long as we can hear when it's her turn to speak.
Is that better?
Well, it is better. Actually, there's a little echo, but it's a lot better. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, we are going to attempt having a live public input session. Actually, I should check first. Ms. Renta, we did not receive any public input via email?
We received nothing in the email. I double-checked.
Thank you. Um, and of course, you can still, everyone, please feel free to participate with public input or deliver public input via email if you so choose. Uh, we also will have the option of having live public input. We do have some guidelines so we can maintain our safety. Please have your name displayed on your Zoom screen, your full name. Raise your hand to speak when the public input session is opened. Uh, we'll just go in the order that hands are raised. You will be called upon in the order that your hand is raised. Uh, I will call upon you and unmute you. At that point, you will have three seconds for public input. Three seconds. Public input. The seconds would be awfully difficult to... Very difficult. Uh, you would have three minutes for public input. Uh, we will warn you at 30 seconds remaining, that you have 30 seconds remaining. Uh, and then at the expiration of your time, we'll ask you, uh, your time will be up and you'll be muted and moved to attendees. Um, so please, also, of course, you know, we must maintain decorum and appropriate conduct during our public input sessions. Um, Mr. Farm, you're not a member of the public, but you have some inputs, sir.
Uh, I guess just for a point of clarification, when you say we are going to be, uh, letting people know they have 30 seconds left, can that be a visual, uh, uh, thing rather than potentially hop in? Because I know for me, if someone hops in, I just lose, I forget what place I'm in, let alone what I was saying.
Good point, Mr. Farm. I was thinking about that, and I'm going to utilize one of our debate tools as a debate coach. It indicates that you, when you are running low on time, you got a one-minute warning and then 30 seconds. So...
Point of order, Marjorie Bonnades in the audience.
Oh, thank you.
I'll get her.
Yeah, thanks. Ms. Wetmore?
I was just gonna say what Austin did. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I'll open up our public input session. Uh, if there's anyone who'd like to comment on, um, we, at this point, we'll go with an item on our agenda or something on the purview of the council, please raise your hand. If there's anyone who would like to participate in public input, please raise your hand. Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. You have the floor.
Hi, thank you. I just want to thank you for doing this, for making the oral public input possible. I think it's wonderful and long overdue, and I just wanted you to know that I really appreciate it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Is there anyone else who'd like to participate in public input? Is there anyone else who'd like to participate in public input? Is there anyone else who'd like to participate in public input? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close our public input session. Uh, report of the president will be relatively brief, but we do have some updates. Just to review our meeting schedule, I'd like to remind everyone that, um, starting in March, we'll be moving to separate committee nights. Two committee nights, one council meeting. So our next meetings will be, uh, March 15th, there will be council committees. Uh, March 22nd, I'm sorry, the council committees on March 15th will be finance, public safety, uh, public works and parks, recreation and culture, human services. On March 22nd, the committees will be municipal planning of properties, economic and development, administration, personnel, education, environment conservation, and settlement. And do please note that settlement committee will be, uh, as needed as a time prior to the 7:00 PM. Regular committees by special notice if necessary. We'll then have our regular council meeting scheduled for March 29th. Uh, we'll also have tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:30, we'll have what is the First Look Workshop, uh, where we'll be introduced to the Civics Clerk platform that we'll be utilizing in future meetings. Uh, we also have planned a workshop on the first with a mock meeting, and on the eighth, again, practice meetings. No business of the council will be undertaken at any of these meetings. These are simply practice. Uh, no council business whatsoever. We will then also have a meeting of the Rules Committee on the 24th at 5:30. Uh, and so while we're going through this process, if anyone has any thoughts about ways we might need to tweak our processes and reflect that in our standing rules, uh, please communicate that, and you will work towards making those changes that are necessary so we can implement this tool, uh, to better serve the public and make our meetings more efficient. That essentially, I believe, is it for the report of the president. Uh, Mr. McDowell, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I didn't, forgive me, perhaps I missed it, but, uh, I didn't hear the CCA committee, uh, mentioned. Will that be coming back off the table? There's one item sitting on the table of that committee. It's been there for about 11 months.
Oh, um, yeah, do that as a standing committee, but yeah, we can look at that. All right, um, our next item of business is reports of boards and departments, and we have a finance update. Do we have, uh, Mr. Jackson with us today?
I see him.
Uh, there he is. Uh, Mr. Jackson, you have a finance report for us?
So there's also Scott Jackson in attendees. That's not the one we want, is it? Because if so, he won't be able to answer us. We have one in the room and we have one in attendees. Who is the real Scott Jackson? Please stand up.
I was just, I was heading there myself, Ms. Renta.
Um, Rick, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. I'm on. Is Scott trying to log on?
Well, he, we have him in the room with us, but we have one out in the attendees as well, and, and he's not answering, so we're not sure which one is him.
Uh, let me, let me give you his number. Just, do you see a...
They're both by me, Rick.
Oh, okay. Do you have, do you have a, do you have a 2035?
No, there's no numbers in the, in the attendees, but I think Mick's calling him, so...
That, that was Mr. Jackson in the attendees. Uh, he's now...
So who's the one in here with us listed as Scott Jackson then? Now we have two.
Isn't that game among us with the imposter rage with the kids nowadays? Isn't, maybe that's what's going on here? If someone keels over, we'll know.
Okay, so there's, 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 there he is.
Uh, okay, it looks like I've been promoted. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Jackson.
Okay, fantastic.
Although we can only see, we can, the top of your face is cut off, however.
All right, friends, thank you for your time and your efforts as always. But finance report, you should have received some documents that have both a munish run of expenses and revenues as well as just a sort of a cover sheet that breaks it down by, by sort of large silos. What we're looking at right now, and so we're in that sort of unique time of the year where we are dealing with three budgets at one time. One is the closed year, one is current year, and one is proposed year that we're working on, providing to you a, a full and honest budget that meets what I think the, the people of Hampden want to see. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus really on, on that middle one, which is current year. We are, we have projections and our projections right now, and they're pretty conservative because I'm a pretty conservative guy when it comes to budgeting. Our current projections, and, and Rick is as well. I don't want to, I don't want to leave Rick out of the mix on this one. Is that we are looking at about a $2 million gap between expenses and revenue. Now, the good news is, and that's expenses over revenue, which is a negative 2 million. But we have a lot of irons in the fire that still have plenty of time to come to fruition. So through additional expenditure controls and recoupment of items on the concession line specifically and on the COVID line specifically, that have a chance to, to come in positive and, and not only erase that negative, but, but turn it positive. So that's what we're working on for current year, but we're still keeping an eye on expenditure control because that's our, that's the greatest tool that we have available to us. You can't make revenues happen, but you can reduce expenses. So that's what we're working on. We're looking at negative, negative two today. But hopefully, by the time we meet again in a few weeks, I can give you information as to how that has, has moved forward and is, is starting to trend toward the positive. We also have last year's outstanding budget, which the Audit Committee and our auditor need to meet to, to discuss. Obviously, last year was this is my 28th year in government. Nobody's seen anything like we saw last year. And so I think we're, we're, we're prepared to, to take some, take some losses on that. But the auditor will be able to walk you through what it looks like. And so just need to make sure that the Audit Committee is prepared to, to sort of meet with Claremont and, and talk about, and, and walk through the audit book. So, so hopefully that can happen relatively quickly. We are in a position where we have, where the auditor has submitted to OPM. So we have met all of our statutory requirements, but we need to be able to, to talk sort of right down earth in a language that people can clearly understand about what is in that book. And so we need that Audit Committee to meet with the auditor and, and then maybe we can have some, some other conversations and talk about what that actually, you know, what it means in terms of our ability to try to provide services to the residents of Hampden. And then upcoming year, we are working on putting together a budget book for you folks. You may know this, you may not know this. Hampden's Budget Book is one of the narrowest in the state of Connecticut. And so I don't want to make it, you know, 550 pages. But I think I want to add a little bit more to it, including things like some org charts and a little bit more narrative. So I'll work with the Council Office to see what the, what the appetite is for those types of movements. But I think it, I think the budget as it currently exists, which is just numbers, doesn't necessarily tell the story of what we are collectively trying to do. So, uh, Mr. President, if it is fair, I will turn it over to Mr. Galarza to offer any additional detail on those items.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Galarza?
Nope, that's fine. Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
All right. Thank you very much. If anyone has questions, and I'm sure there are some, please email. Ms. Renta will gather them. We, in the next meeting, we will publish the questions with any answers, so everyone can see the questions with the answers.
So, so, uh, Mr. President, this is my first run-through. How will the questions be transmitted to me?
Miss, I asked council members to email Ms. Renta. Ms. Renta will then forward them to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll be looking out for it.
Thank you. Mr. Morton, although we don't have, this isn't listed, we did ask last council for a council meeting for an update as to the administration's efforts in terms of equity. Mr. Morton, I understand you can speak to us about that a little bit?
Yes, I, yes, I can, Mr. Council President. Thank you. Just today, actually, I had a conversation with Mr. Jackson and some other members of the team about getting re-engaged on the mayor's Equity Task Force that was started sometime last year, or I think about a year ago. There's certainly interest to re-engage the members of the committee. We're aware that there's some folks that sense the initial few meetings. Additional folks have reached out and asked to be a part of the process and offered their services, and we've been tracking that and have even begun to reach out. But we're waiting for things to settle down a little bit in the mayor's office. As you all are very much aware, there's been a lot of changes in personnel and staffing in the past, you know, two weeks. Today, for example, is officially the acting positions for Chief of Staff, our, our Director of Arts and Culture and Special Projects, and our Community Manager at the Keith Center went into effect. So we're waiting to get everybody up to speed and transition over the next couple of weeks, and then at that point, we'll have identified you know, our priorities and who's assigned what and how we'll move forward with doing that. But it is still very much the intention of the mayor and his administration to re-engage that group and begin to work on deliverables and what we'd like to see as far as recommendations after they, they do their work and their process. So stay tuned over the coming weeks as we iron out the specifics of that program and we'll be able to provide you when to date when it's kicking back off.
Ms. Morton, would we be able to ask for an update next council meeting?
All right, I didn't, I didn't catch that, Mr. Council President.
Well, I'm sorry. Would we be able to get an update next council meeting?
Without question, of course, Mr. Council President.
Thank you very much. All right, those are our reports. Approval of previous minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of 2121? Miss Bias, second by Ms. Schumaker, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved. We have no items for our consent calendar. We'll move on to our regular agenda. I will say I'm very happy that this will be the last time I'll ask for a two-thirds of the members present voting to suspend the rules to pass these items this evening. May I have a motion to suspend the rules?
So moved. Second.
Schumaker, seconded by Ms. Bias, discussion. All favor suspending the rules, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? The rules have been suspended. If there is no objection from the council, I would like to move item four to the top of our agenda, the appointment of Jerome L. Alston to fill the vacancy in the second district.
So moved.
Well, we'll take that as the, the motion to approve. Mr. Farmer, is there a make of the motion? Would you like to speak to it?
I would just like to say it is going to be a tough time as we figure out these issues, but more help is always better. So I look forward to all of us working together more cohesively.
Agreed. Further discussion on item four. Ms. Klaus?
I just haven't gotten a chance to say hello yet, so Jerome, I'd just like to say welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Klaus. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you. Um, Jerome, welcome. Incredibly excited to be supporting a, a, someone in the role of the second district as I'm sure you know there are big shoes to fill there, not only as a councilman, but as a teacher, as somebody who's dedicated to building the bench and bringing people into the process. No one did that better than Harry. So welcome aboard. Thank you. Excited to see you carry that torch.
Thank you, Mr. McDowell. Ms. Schumaker?
Yes, thank you. Jaron, I haven't had a chance to meet you yet, but I look forward to reaching out and having an introductory conversation and welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Schumaker. Further questions or comments? Ms. Row Lewis?
Good evening, Mr. Alston. Welcome. Glad to see you. We haven't had that introductory conversation as well, but I look forward to it, and the more the merrier. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Ms. Row Lewis. Any further discussion? Mr. Alston, I will just echo what my colleague said. Welcome aboard. You are, you do indeed have some big shoes to fill. We'll have to have to apologize that you're coming on at exactly the worst time in our schedule. We'll be starting up our budget season soon, which is long and arduous. But I'm sure you being a CPA is going to help us with this process, so we look forward to that. And Ms. Gary?
I just wanted to say welcome, welcome, welcome.
And Mr. Weber?
Good afternoon, Mr. Alston. I'd like to welcome you aboard. I'm very happy to see someone with your qualifications, particularly in your professional field. I've been, I think I'm the newest council person, and it's been incredible experience thus far. Learning curve, pretty tremendous, but I would look forward to, you know, you representing the second district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving Mr. Alston to fill the vacancy in the second district, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously. Welcome aboard, Mr. Alston. And again, with the council's, yeah, what are these twinkle fingers, Ms. Schumaker? Is that what those are? So we'll do some of those.
I believe they're jazz hands.
Jazz, I thought jazz hands went horizontally.
They're spirit fingers.
Spirit fingers. Again, with the council's indulgence, if we can take a pause in our process here, and you can ask Ms. Morrison to swear, Mr. Alston, in.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. All right, Mr. Alston, congratulations. Will you raise your right hand, sir? Do you solemnly swear you will faithfully discharge your duties on the Hampden Legislative Council according to the statutes of the state of Connecticut, the ordinances of the town of Hampden, and that you will promise to faithfully uphold the Constitution of the United States of America to the best of your abilities? So help you, God.
I do.
Okay. You're officially sworn in, and I'll send you the oath sheet to make it official.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alston, would you like to say a few words at this time?
Just a brief few. To all the admonitions about my, my predecessor, I know that those are some big shoes. I've heard about them over the last few months, and I look forward to trying to fill those and just working with you all. And I thank you for the welcome tonight and look forward to working with each of you.
Thank you, Mr. Alston. Oh, and in terms of some logistics, Mr. Alston, Ms. Renta will be in contact with you with materials like the charter, standing rules, and we are still working on your device. So we'll make sure that we get that stuff together.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, moving on with, and, and thank you very much, Ms. Morrison, for, for participating this evening. Much appreciated. We'll move on with our more boring part of our agenda. Item one, refund of property taxes collected between July 1st, 2020 and June 30th, 2021, totaling $6,215.96. May I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Bonn, the second by Mr. Farmer. Discussion.
Give the people their taxes. Or their tax money, rather.
Thank you. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item one passes. Item two, refund of motor vehicle taxes collected from July 1st, 2020 and June 30th, 2021, totaling $4,535.98. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Farmer?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDowell. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. Item three, an agreement for taxation being of $23,835 for the Davenport-Dunbar residents. May I have a motion? It seems like Ms. Schumaker got in there and then, let's say, Ms. Bonn. Mr. Morton, Mr. Jackson, could someone just sort of walk us through this? We voted on this every year, I believe, but if you could just sort of give us the details?
Yes, so this is an annual abatement allowed under Connecticut general statutes. It is acted on every year. The, the term of the agreement by which this may be acted on extends to 2041. But it is, it is to provide some, some level of support to an enterprise like Davenport-Dunbar that provides a service that is necessary to our community.
Thank you. Any further questions, Mr. Farmer?
No question. Just, you know, I'm thankful that we are doing this process. As we know, our elderly population is pertinent to us and the character that we carry as a town. So it's always important that we take care of them. So it's always important that we take care of them.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Well said. Further discussion or comments? Right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. Item five, appointment of Jay Crookshank as an alternate to planning and zoning commission for a term to expire January 31st, 2023. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Uh, sounds like Mr. McDowell got in there and Mrs. Bondi's had the, uh, second. Mr. McDowell, as the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
Uh, I know, I know, uh, Mr. Farmer normally takes this thunder, but, uh, I will thank all of our residents for uh, their service to our community. We have a lot of openings on our boards and commissions and we rely on volunteers in our community to make the, the good work happen. So thank you to those who serve our community, um, day in and day out with this stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Anis. Is there other, Mr. Farmer?
Uh, as the real Mr. Anis, I'd like to thank, uh, in all seriousness, it is pertinent that we do thank people, uh, to do this work. Uh, alternates are also pertinent as when important business like planning and zoning, uh, doesn't have someone to come in and be a backup. If there's not a quorum, uh, that's an issue. That's less of an issue with Zoom these days, uh, but it is still a very important role. Um, so we should, we should be appreciating everyone who takes the time and effort as many hands make the light work. So thank you for opportunity to do this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Anis, too. Further discussion? Right, seeing now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. Uh, item six, appointment of Joshua L. Watkins to the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire January 31st, 2026. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Shoemaker, seconded by Mr. McDowell. Uh, Ms. Shoemaker, for the maker of the motion, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, just, uh, want to say our Economic Development Commission is, um, thinking about a lot of great things for the town uh, with a new acting director and I'm excited to see this addition to the commission.
Thank you, Ms. Shoemaker. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. Item seven, appointment of Christina R. Acosta to the Fire Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2021. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Uh, seems like Mr. Caesar got there first and Mr. Farmer. Mr. Caesar is the maker of the motion. Would you like to speak to it?
I'm just, uh, glad it's being filled. I believe this was the seat that I was on about a year ago or so, so it's been filled finally, which I'm glad and, um, happy to support, uh, Christina. Thank you.
Mr. Caesar? Further discussion? Mr. Farmer?
Uh, it seems like someone else is in the hot seat. So thank you, uh, Mr. Caesar, for your dedication and I look forward to this new person.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer, and I, I will echo, uh, the comments previously. Uh, yeah, we really do need it. It is, these commissions cannot operate and do their important work without people willing to volunteer their time uh, for essentially no compensation whatsoever, other than the knowledge that they're serving their community. So much appreciated to all of them. Further discussion? Was that a hand, Ms. Bondi's? Ms. Bondi's?
Yes, thank you. I just want to, um, echo that, uh, Mr., um, Chris, Chris, um, Acosta is fairly new to our town and, um, just so happy that he's, he's stepping up and getting involved and, um, took the seat on this commission. So happy to vote for him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bondi.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. Item eight. I'm going to get a new sheet of paper. Uh, order authorizing interdepartmental transfers from 2021 fiscal year budget Public Works and Parks. $330,000 from E and C, $130,000 for snow removal supplies, $200,000 for snow removal overtime. Uh, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Ms. Bondi's. Uh, Mr. Caesar?
Good evening, Mr. President. Um, very quickly, if I could first start.
Yeah, besides the fact that it snowed a lot, you have any details to fill in for us?
I, I would like to first just start very, very quickly, uh, welcoming Mr. Austin to the council and to that, also thank him as a, him the resident for his service. And a very quick, uh, shout out to Mr. Weber as well, because I'm not sure if I've had any business in front of you since he's taken over. I just want to welcome both of yous and my phone is always open to you guys. Any questions, email, we can get together, whatever you like. Yeah, give you a rundown to Public Works, whatever works for you guys. Um, so with that said, we have a two-part transfer in front of you. Um, one part being the, uh, snow removal overtime account. The, this afternoon, I forwarded the latest, uh, update on the budget as I got it this afternoon. Uh, what you had received last week was not reflected upon, uh, weekend ending to 12th. So I did, uh, get that information this afternoon, put it together, and I believe Ms. Renta forwarded it. Sorry for the short notice, but I really did just, uh, just get it. So currently, um, with this, this past week's storms, uh, we spent, it was a $57,000 week. We had 57,325.03. Uh, the week prior to that was 48,424.17 cents. To give you a, a, just a taste of what it's been like, you know, that those, those are the two of our worst weeks. We did have a a $64,000 week prior to Christmas. Um, biggest issue we're having with these storms is unfortunately the timing. And we did dodge a bullet this past weekend. We had storms that were forecasted that didn't come to fruition on holidays. There were two, uh, holidays this past weekend. Uh, very lucky last night, I think we had a, what was a potential for disaster storm with ice. Uh, the, the, the weather changed, got warmer. We actually just had a four-hour call-in for three trucks last night up in the north end of town where we had icing over, then it changed to, uh, heavy rain, so we're fortunate for that. Uh, unfortunately, we are looking at another storm on Thursday. We're talking right now about five to eight inches of snow that's supposed to go into this, uh, Friday and then changing to rain. So it just seems like it's been one after the next, after the next, but, you know, we are and have been and will be ready for all of it. Um, unfortunately, with the, the booking of this past weekend's, uh, this past week's events, we did now move into a deficit of $17,664.8. Um, and then moving forward, so I, I requested $200,000, you know, the number, as you all know, it's, it's an arbitrary number. It could be, I might hopefully not need any of that. It's just a forecast. We, we do have some to cover, as I just mentioned, but moving forward, let's be hopeful that it does not, um, snow any further, but there are quite a few of them lined up in the next two weeks. So we'll see. I mean, just, it will only be used for snow removal overtime, obviously, so, um, I am optimistic to report as well, inside the packet that I sent today, I have a, uh, let's round up with $21,000 bill. I'll, I'll call it to the Board of Education. Uh, I've had meetings with them. They've, they've arranged to, uh, reimburse me for the time that, as you all know, or, or, not only you know, just to make everyone aware. Um, this year is the first year that the Public Works Parks Department is now plowing all of the parking lots at the school. And I must say, it, it's been a major, major savings to the town. Cause I know what they would have spent compared to what it, it's costed us. We saved over $100,000 to this point. Um, I will defer this document, I've sent it to everyone, to, um, Mr. Jackson and Mr. um, Galarza to, um, plug in fringes to this, because what I've given you is just straight labor and, um, salt usage. So I believe we should be entitled to fringes as well. So I will defer to Mr. Jackson, Mr. Galarza on that. We can talk about that in a separate meeting. Um, with that said, the other part of this transfer is, uh, again, with this line, we've been extremely lucky because of the situation from last year, the salt line, um, you know, so removal supplies. Uh, this request is for the 130,000 is a, is a 2,000 ton additional of salt. And then there's additional salt on top of that required for sidewalks. It's a different type of, uh, salt in the parking garage. So that's where it's rounded to 130. Um, the good news is this will fill the salt shed, so we're not in a deficit that way. I just like to keep it ahead of the game. As we started this year with virtually a full shed, we'd say this, this could have been a lot worse if we didn't have the year we had last year. We were able to start with, with a few, uh, you know, a couple of thousand ton to begin with. So that's a good thing. This is, this is precautionary. We do need it. These, these storms have been very, very, um, brutal with salt, you know, because a lot of the times, the smaller ones with ice, we've had quite a few, uh, events. In, in the packet that I sent, the latest one, for example, I like to be, give you guys as much information as possible, as always. Um, we've actually had 18 different events this year going back to October 30th was the first event where we had to send crews out to do snow and ice, um, removal. So there's different, um, there's pages, like a 15-page report that has all the certified uh, amounts of snow and ice and all the certified forecasts from the days that we had crews in, uh, for your, um, viewing pleasure. If you wanted to, you know, to look through that, it gives you a better picture, because a lot of times folks forget like what, you know, nobody realized we had, you know, two months, three months ago, we were out already with this into this account. So it's a nice refresher and, and I'm sure you folks are asked out there in the public, uh, it hasn't, you know, it hasn't snowed that much or this and that, what, you know, what, what are we doing out there, blah, 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 and all that. It's best way to do it is information. These are, you know, these are the, the actual certified stats of what was what. So, um, I, I always like to, uh, to provide you all with that information as well. Um, at this time, I'll, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Caesar. Uh, and, and first, I should have said this right off the bat. Thank, thank you to you and your crew. I know that these are long hours, uh, of difficult work. Uh, very, very taxing, very tiring physically, uh, and emotionally as you're trying to drive and, and, you know, keep us all safe. So a lot of thanks.
Yeah.
From our end.
Uh, you're welcome. And they, they are the best, my crew. I'll tell you, they are the best.
Yeah, they are. Thank you. Uh, and before opening up to the floor, Jackson, just one, uh, quick question. Uh, well, not quick, but a, a difficult question. So our emergency contingency account. Uh, if we open up that purse, do, uh, moths fly out of it at this point?
Uh, no, there are, uh, there is still, uh, uh, six figures that is available in that account. Um, but a lot of it was, you know, at the, at the budget time and, and you'll have to forgive me because I, because I wasn't there at the budget time. There's sort of, you know, large pots that the council kind of sets up around DNC. Says, oh, well, hold this for this, we'll hold that for that. Um, and so we're, we're coming to the end of that, uh, snow and ice account. But it is a, a significant issue, um, as Mr. Caesar, uh, can attest, uh, from October to April, we work in northern Hamden every single day, de-icing and, and, and moving, uh, items. You know, as a, as a Putnam Avenue kid, I didn't realize we had two different climate zones in Hamden, but we do. Uh, you know, the leaves fall faster in one place, the ice runs harder in one place. That's just the way, uh, the topography works. Um, so, uh, I, 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 I don't, there aren't moths in it, uh, uh, President McGary. Um, I remember a day, I had this exact phone. iPhone five, I've had this phone for close to a decade, uh, talking to Mr. Caesar on this phone and having CNN on the other line when we got 44 inches of snow. We cannot, uh, discount or discredit the work, um, uh, that these folks do um, because it saves lives. We got a lot of doctors, we got a lot of nurses, we got a lot of teachers. Uh, we got a lot of really critical people who need to be able to get out of their house and, and go do something that benefits all of us. Um, so I know it's a, I know it's a big number. I know it's a lot more than you wanted to see. Um, but this is reality and we gotta, we gotta fund that operation. So I, I appreciate the council's consideration of this idea.
I guess, uh, I'd have to ask though, so if another emergency or contingency arises with a significant chunk of money, are we, will we be able to move some funds around? Um, or do, are you comfortable with, uh, what we, the kind of smaller cushion that we have now?
Um, I'm, I'm comfortable because once it gets into emergency territory, we have different, um, different avenues and, and I don't remember, Mr. Caesar, if you remember the total cost of those 44 inches of snow, but it was in the million.
Um, yeah, I think we ended up, it was like, uh, like 1.7 million or something like that. It was crazy.
Yeah, so we, we have, the, there are different doors depending on what is, you, you know, what is, uh, what is happening. Um, so I do feel comfortable, uh, with that, uh, amount of cushion as we look toward, uh, a break in the weather and can, and can give, give this one a, a little bit of a, uh, of a pause.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Um, and Mr. Farmer, maker of the motion, would you like to, well, you have your hand up.
I thank you, Council President. Uh, you are very sweet. Um, I, I'd like to first thank Mr. Caesar, uh, uh, for all the work his crew has done. There's been issues that I brought up, uh, that were quickly taken care of. So uh, the town thanks you, we thank you. Um, I, I, I guess I have a couple of questions. Um, I, I'm glad, uh, Director, Acting Director, Jackson, uh, answered the, the question on what happens with emergency too big. I, I guess my first question, uh, is have we thought about in ter- in terms of engineering to deal with some of the difficulties of icing in the northern part of town? Uh, not necessarily the discussion for here, but, but like, has that been a conversation over time? Uh, the second question that I had, uh, was to, uh, again, not necessarily returning to this, but definitely pertinent. Um, capital budget in terms of the trucks as, uh, last year went along with, uh, Public Works as they plowed. Um, and, you know, one of the seats was, was, uh, a, a bumpy ride, uh, to save the lease. Uh, so just, uh, the capital, uh, budget side, is there anything that we need to be doing to alleviate or deal with snow-related issues?
So I could chime into that. Um, yeah, as far as capital, uh, is concerned, we have some major repairs that need to happen to, to some equipment that we would normally uh, invest through capital funds that, because they're, they're quite large. But, um, you know, there, there, we're, we have no, um, there is no capital funding really left at all in Public Works right now, and that, that concerns me and it has for a while. You know, the, the continual reinvestment in equipment is important. Um, I, I, while we're talking about snow, I always use snow as my example. Uh, you know, our six-wheel dump trucks is the majority of the fleet when it comes to snow. We do run a couple of smaller trucks in some of the tighter areas. Um, but my concern is this, yeah, we haven't bought a new truck in a few years now. Even if we were to purchase one per year, we would still be left with a truck that's 17 years old, 16 years old and on down the line. And, and that's at the very least. So these trucks, you know, we have a great mechanic staff. We don't, I don't mind reinvesting in the trucks, so that's not necessarily, you know, today's problem, but, you know, it is an aging fleet. And that just concerns me that, you know, we're not, um, continuing the reinvestment into it. Um, so that, 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 like, hopefully, I'm glad you brought it up, Mr. Farmer, about the capital. That's a, maybe a conversation for another day and I look forward to having that. Um, and as far as, uh, the, the engineering issues and things, uh, we actually have, um, conquered, uh, uh, a few areas, problematic areas that were a big problem when, um, you know, like started, uh, actually going to be ten years ago, uh, next month. Um, and Gaylord Mountain Road was always a problem. We still have some issue up there, but that was a huge problem years ago. Um, West Woods Road, where, and if anyone knows that area with the rock cut, we've solved a lot of these issues. They were constant um, issues that would, 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 as I think Mr. uh, Mr. Jackson had alluded to earlier, Northern Hampden. Those were liter- literally, even if it's not snowing or, if it's almost it's cold, if there was any kind of rain or any precipitation, those would almost automatically resort to a, to an emergency calling because a portion of the road would ice over. And now a lot of those we have dealt with, but there's endless amounts and and that's another discussion with, with some capital funding with Mr. Austin as well. That I'd like to be able to knock out a few more of those problematic areas, but we have made some progress in that. I can say, and we've done majority of it in-house as well, so which is always a tremendous savings um to, to the, to the taxpayer.
Well, I, I'm glad Mr. uh, Mr. Caesar brought up uh Gaylord Mountain. I was going to bring it up. Um, Tuttle, it's another area. These are long stretches um that require almost constant maintenance until we uh add in to Mr. uh, Mr. Farmer, to your point, until we add in an engineering solution about uh, uh, about movement of water. So it doesn't stay on the road. It doesn't eliminate it, but it makes it a little bit easier uh to deal with. Uh, and so I know Mr. Austin has a lot of projects that are on the boards right now. Um, we talked about it very briefly, uh, uh, coming out of the restroom the other day. Um, so we have to, uh, we have to, we have to get together and, and actually dig into it project by project. Um, but to the, uh, to the extent that we can use these dollars to save dollars down the line. That's kind of what I'm going to prioritize.
No, I, I thank you both. I, I just wanted to share those perspectives as we go into budget season. I, I think capital budget will help us sort out a lot of different issues. So I, I appreciate both your insight. Uh, and it's always good to hear that we have made some progress. So thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Farmer. Um, Ms. Bonnies, Ms. Horsley, actually, I think her hand was up first, but then went down and then came back up. Uh, so if you don't mind, uh, Ms. Horsley?
Uh, yeah, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Caesar and um his team. Um, I really appreciate that you are working so hard and being so efficient with getting the snow removed and um haven't had any complaints about snow removal um in my district. So I just really appreciate your team. And I also appreciate you being proactive about hiring the uh ma- maintainers. Even though we have a soft uh hiring freeze in town, um, I'm really glad you did that because otherwise we would not be able to clear the snow that we have this year. So thank you for always being on top of it and, and really looking out for us. Um, the other comment I want to make is, and I think you say this, um, you said this to us last budget season, but I hope we remember this in budget season um to my colleagues that we probably need to put more money in this um, this line um for uh, public work. So we're being honest about our budgeting and not requiring that Director Caesar have to come here every year and ask for us for money. And so um, I'm going to remember that and I hope the rest of my colleagues will also. So I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Horsley.
Thank you, Ms. Horsley. Ms. Bonnies?
Hi, thank you. Um, yes, I agree with Valerie, um, Ms. Horsley, Dr. Horsley. Um, Craig, you've done an amazing job and I always um give you a critique after every storm because I do live at the top of Gaylord Mountain Road. So um, I appreciate the, the clearance. And uh, again, getting, getting my husband to work to the hospital early in the morning is a, a, in a priority and you always help out with that. Um, the concerns that I have are, yes, the aging fleet, the capital. Um, our E and C fund is now going to be at thirty-eight thousand. And I, I have concerns there, not related to, to you, it's to the, to the, my colleagues on council. Um, you know, we could be, we're going to need to look for other sources of uh revenue to cover things like overtime or another storm, things like that. So we just have to be mindful too that we fund our E and C account for those unforeseen events. Um. And like, you know, what we all want to do is just be more honest and more transparent with our budgeting. So um, again, another concern. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnies. Ms. Rollus?
Mr. Caesar, good evening. Um, appreciate everything you've done. Um, you've helped me tremendously because I have, I'm one of them who has to get to work by four in the morning. So I appreciate it. Um, everything you've done from where, where I am, where I stand. And yes, there are two seasons in Hampden. Um, because I've lived in both communities and so I am aware. And you don't only do, when a storm, you just stick to the storm because I've called you for several things. And you've answered me um quickly. And um, so I appreciate um everything. And I can, um, Dr. Horsley, I concur. Everything you've said. Um, Mr. Caesar, appreciate you so much. Thank you. And your team, and your team as well.
It's all about the team.
Your team.
They're the ones out there doing it.
Yes.
I pass that along. Thank you.
I appreciate that, appreciate that. And a lot of mornings I'm leaving and you're not at home. So I appreciate the hard work, appreciate the hard work. Thank you.
Yeah, he's on channel eight.
Uh, Mr. Webber, can I see your hand go up and then down briefly before Ms. Shoemakers or?
Yeah, it was, it was a brief, and I just wanted to uh also uh give accommodation. These are, uh, thank you for uh welcoming to the council as well. Um, I certainly appreciate it. I'm sure all the people in the seven certainly appreciate it as we are like in, you know, a, a pretty hilly part of the town. And so you always have this, uh, I see the trucks riding by quite frequently, so it makes me feel secure and uh leaving the house and making sure our first responders are able to get to their jobs and uh take care of the city. So we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. Ms. Shoemaker?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Caesar, I'll add a word of thanks and, and uh, this is not the time for this conversation. But we have a lot of uh different emergency weather events that our Department of Public Works has to manage these days. And so maybe we need to think a little bit differently about how we uh define our, our project lines in public works. I would hate to see us put a lot of money into snow removal. And then Craig, you have to come because we haven't had snow, but we've had another tornado. And we have to do a transfer, which wouldn't make any sense. Uh, so maybe the bigger topic is how do we think about dealing with damaging storms in our budget and, and funding public works? But um, maybe not having to call it all snow removal or tree removal. But why don't we think that through a little bit? That, I'll pitch for that. Thank you. But thanks for all your great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Shoemaker. Ms. Gary?
And first I want to say to Craig and the team that I appreciate you guys. I appreciate the work that you guys do in Hampden. I do have a concern because I've got a few phone calls. I don't know if it's anything that we could do about it. But there's older people that sometime pay people to shovel them out and shovel their driveways and stuff. And then the plow come and shovel them back in. And they're older people. How do we, how do we address that issue if we can?
That's, that's a great question, Ms. Gary. Um, it's, it's, it's very disheartening for me because I, I mean, you have people have to understand that like the snow has to go slower unfortunately. And it's just, it's, it's, it's terrible. I have two aprons at my own house that get buried every, you know, every time it snows. You almost wish that they, they, they would hold off paying somebody until we have been pushed back to the curb. Because a lot of times they shovel, you know, uh, too early. Like, I, I understand they got to get out and all that. So it's a, it's a fine line. We have, um, in, in times, like sometimes folks will get like a big boulder of snow in the, in the apron. And I have said, you know, um, you know, if something that can't be moved by shovel, to, to assist where we can, it's just, we can't really assist in every driveway in Hampden. It's unfortunate. You know, my only advice would be to try to uh just hold off a tiny bit on, on, um, on the shoveling of it. So then it's a, it's cleared out one time. Um, you know, but I know that sometimes that's easier said than done. But it's really, that's the one thing about the snow removal that's imperfect, uh, for, for no other way to put it. It's just, again, you have to imagine that everything that's in the street has to get off the street to, to, to clear the road. So it's uh, it's very frustrating and, and I hate to see it happen. Plow drivers hate doing it. Um, you know, it's very difficult, but uh, you know, it's, it's a fine line, but it's just one of those things. That's my only, you know, advice at this point, if they could hold off a bit on, until we're closer to the curb. Because if we're not to the curb yet, we're coming. That's, you know, that's the thing. And it's just, we try to work with folks. I mean, I've gotten calls for compliments about how the driver actually was able to, you know, angle a plow, this, that. But I mean, we have, you know, you have twenty thousand, you know, residences or, you know, upwards of that. You know, that's, it's hard to do that. You know, we can't do that in every location. We try to do what we can, where we can. But it really is, uh, it is frustrating. I mean, it just, that we have to do that at times, but that would be my only uh piece of advice, Ms. Gary.
All right. Thank you. I'll relay the message to them. Thank you so much. Thanks for all you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gary. Mr. Farmer?
Uh, uh, to, to uh, thank you again, uh, Council President. Uh, uh, to add on Ms. Schumacher's uh, uh, point. Uh, I, I think it is something that we definitely do need to think about. Uh, maybe potentially uh ho- hold space for some of these more nuanced meetings during budget season to maybe have a separate capital meeting uh and to kind of go through these things. Uh, the only other question I have that I forgot to ask earlier, uh, Director Caesar. Um, if tree limbs and stuff fall because of snow or ice or something, is that covered by the money we just gave you? Or would that be a different account?
So um typically, when tree limbs fall, that, that would come out of our regular overtime account. But sometimes when they're um, if they're falling in the middle of a snowstorm, they could be considered part of the removal because they would have to be removed out of the road so we could plow the road. So you know, under, under a normal, you know, uh, windstorm, it comes out of our regular overtime. But in that case, some of it could be captured in the snow overtime if it's in the middle of a storm.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, and to Ms. Shoemaker's uh, uh, point. Um, I think this definitely uh deserves a separate conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Ms. Webber?
Thank you. Um, I would like to uh also say what a great job you've done, Mr. Caesar. Um, and echo what they, my um colleagues have said. However, I do have a couple of questions. Um, I see a lot of private contractors pushing the snow out into the street. Um, is that something that you frown upon or is it something that is okay?
Uh, we absolutely frown upon it. Um, and we, we have sent out our enforcement officer who wears many hats uh, to, to speak to property owners and such. Because the issue that we have with it, like if you, for example, one of the biggest issues is like on town walk. Uh, they come out, they plow the, you know, tho- those units and all that stuff, they cross the street. And they push it to the curb, but it doesn't get all the way off the curb. So it's, it's an issue that we have. Another issue is unfortunately, there are a lot of um property owners that blow snow back into the street. Um, you know, that, that creates potential icy situations because it gets hard packed. And you know, we just want to, you know, just remind folks that when you can um, keep the snow, you know, blow the snow onto your own property or anywhere but the street. Sometimes it's a situation where, you know, there's no other option in the tight space. I understand that. But yeah, that's it. It, they're going back to the contractors though. That is an issue of ours. We have, uh, we have policed it. We've also engaged uh Mr. Austin's um staff as far as them, with them being the um the sidewalk inspectors, because a lot of times they will plow this snow onto a sidewalk. And then it becomes an issue with, you know, keeping a sidewalk open and clear. So yeah, it's definitely something that we frown upon, Ms. Webber.
Okay, and I just have one more question. A lot of the streets, I know we have um parking on one side of the street and not the other side. Um, that creates a big problem. So what do you do about that? Can you tow those cars or find them or what happens? With the ones that?
So this, this, we don't, we hate, you know, we really don't want to have to tow anyone. Um, we did this past with the last large storm about uh two weeks ago, we did an exercise in um, in, in Southern Hampden on the tighter streets. You know, we did basically from like um Wooden Street South, and then we did the Moore Street, Goodrich, in those areas where we just tried to widen the roads. And it was a great team effort down there. Like I used, for example, on, on the Rich Street, we had tremendous buy-in from the neighbors who came out. They wanted to, you know, open up their parking spaces. So they literally went door to door. They helped us get the folks that cars were parked so that we can come down with loaders and widen the streets. We did the whole, um, the whole operation in Southern Hampden where a lot of the tighter streets. We did some in the uh Spring Glen area as well, where they have some of the, um, you know, ti- the tighter situation. So we really, uh, you know, we got to a point where with all the heavy snow we've had, we had to do it for sightline issues and stuff. But there was some, some towing involved um a couple of weeks back where, you know, again, we hate to, to do that. But we had to enforce the parking ban so that we could clear at least down one side of the road. And then, as I said, when enough of the neighbors were involved, we actually had allowed them to park on the other side of the street. Ones who moved so we could clear the other side for them. Because it's very, very tricky. It's very difficult for um, for, for the residents and for, for the plow drivers. I mean, of course, we would love to clear the street, but you know, you have on-street parking in a lot of those neighborhoods. I mean, I grew up in the same situation. It was a tight street, parking on one side. I can remember as a kid, so my father used to make us go out there and shovel it all, but it was a
I shoveled it off.
Oh, please. But anyway, that's a, that's definitely something that we're trying to do and trying to do it, you know, again, back to the, to the parking ban. We need to enforce that. I mean, you know, we got a lot of, um, you know, there's a lot of different scenarios with, 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 with that where you have student parking. Uh, that's an issue for me. It's a hot button personally, because um, well, that's another conversation. But yeah, so we uh, we will tow when we have to. We really don't want to. You know, people don't need that, you know, added, added expense or added headache. So we really try to do it, go door to door as we did the last time, you know, knock on doors. Um, the police were actually a, 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 a help to us uh as far as the door knocking and just reaching out to the residents. And that was their last intention was to have to tow anybody as well. So it's a, you know, it's an ongoing thing, but it's definitely something that we are, uh, you know, what, what we are cognizant of.
Okay, thank you very much. And once again, give a, you know, a heads up, uh, you know, a hand up to the, your crew. They did a great job and I haven't had any complaints at all and I usually do. So, thank you.
They are great.
Poor Ms. Bonnies?
Just, I, I forgot to ask one question. How is um the, the one-way street on Rocky Top working out? Um, Mr. Caesar, in terms of the ease of plowing, is that, was that helpful to you to have that street turn that one to the one-way?
Uh, absolutely. That was a tremendous help. Uh, we've gotten situations in there before where we would, you know, a plow would go up. A lot of times if we complain, it will close the road, but sometimes a plow will leave, go up and end up having to back down the hill because you had a car coming at it. So it's been tremendous flow of traffic there. It's been good. And knock on wood, there's been no issues there. I have, you know, the residents are on board with it up there. So it's a, that was a, that was a tremendous help from the uh
Okay, great.
Traffic authority there.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bonnies. Any further questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor of item nine, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Uh, item passes. Uh, thank you again, Mr. Caesar.
Thank you all.
Uh, item nine, uh, UI agreement. Uh, this item was uh postponed to a date certain. Uh, so I would like to entertain a motion uh to postpone this item pending outcome of the streetlight audit process. By many, all right, thank you. Uh, move by, Mr. Farmer. Uh, it sounded like it was seconded by a variety of people there. Did you catch? Anyone?
I got Mr. McDowell.
McDowell, very good. All right, uh, Mr. Farmer, would you like to speak to the motion?
C- Councilwoman bias spoke of pertinence of, of us doing this. Um, and I think it's a great opportunity for us to to really plan long-term, whatever we do, whether we buy our lights or not. Uh, whatever we do, uh, having the audit will definitely save us uh, money down the line as whatever, once we do it, we will be locked into that price uh, for the next two consecutive decades. So uh, I can't wait to see when we get this uh, audit done.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Farmer. Uh, Ken has communicated. Today's council via email, uh, the meeting is tomorrow. So hopefully we can get this RFP out and see how this process works out. Further questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor, I'm sorry, Mr. Farmer.
I, I, I know there was discussion, like I know there was conversation when we uh, uh, debated passionately on this issue and there was a conversation of having some of this be facilitated by community members. Was there a final uh, outcome of that suggestion?
Mr. Jackson, I'm not sure if you'd be able to answer that one. I don't know if that's on your agenda.
Yeah, I can't, uh, I can't, I can't answer the uh, specific question from Councilman Farmer, but um, I did have uh, some conversations that uh, he led me to write on my uh, whiteboard. Um, call my contact at United Illuminating to discuss this uh, in greater um, greater detail. Um, you know, it's a, you know, buying, buying the streetlights um, comes with cost, right? Because if a light goes out, you don't have anybody to call. You gotta go out and you gotta do it yourself. And the only time you know it is after um, the time that uh, the public works employees are off duty. So it, it creates, it creates its own dynamic. Um, you know, I did uh, spend some time in New Haven, kind of looking at this. New Haven was able to buy their lights. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying that um, it's an idea that uh, we need to present to the council in a way that captures all costs and all opportunity.
No, I, I appreciate that. My question was more to the nuance of uh, the audit, the audit itself of whatever we do, whether we buy them, whether we don't buy our streetlights.
Yeah, there's, yeah, I, I got no, I got no beef with an audit. Um, I think an audit is a good idea because streetlights are a non, they're a tariffed item. They're not metered. Uh, and so if we think that we have a hundred less streetlights, for example, than the utility thinks, then we have to talk about that. And the only way that we're gonna get to that point is uh, is via an audit that where we control the data.
Well, which in, 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 to, to speak to my question, the question was whether community members could do that effort or we had to pay for a contractor or some type of hybrid. That was a question that was asked before. I didn't see anything in the emails or anything in terms of correspondence. So uh, to, to you uh, uh, Director Jackson and to you, Council President. Um, if y'all could get back to us on whether that is a thing. I understand RFP is going out. Great. Let's go ahead and do that, but I would like an answer to that. Uh, because even if we're already paying people to do it, that doesn't mean we can't engage the community uh, and have some input uh, and potential, and have a potentiality of more savings. So.
Yeah, I mean, can, I, I I'm thinking about it. You know what, uh, Councilman Farmer? I think you can crowdsource it. I think you might have some quality assurance, quality control issues when you do that. And so you have to measure that. Um, but I think if you ask, you know, if you put out the call and say, hey, can you walk your block? And, and give me a, give me a pole number, because they're all identified on the pole number. I, I don't, I don't think that's the worst idea in the world. Um, let me, let me i- i- if we can talk offline on that, let's, let's do that and, and try to come up with a methodology that will give us the level of comfort that we want in the data that is collected.
Yeah, every once in a while, we all have great ideas. So hopefully this is one for me.
All right, uh, further discussion on postponing item nine to pending the streetlight audit process. All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All favor, please indicate by saying or showing aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item passes. Uh, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. So I'll just say, Mr. Austin, again, thank you and up for your time and welcome aboard. Uh, Mr. Farmer, do you have something for the good order here? Uh?
I uh, I promise I will keep it short because I know a lot of us are doing so many things. So don't wanna keep here long. Um, I was in the discussion earlier uh, this week around uh, a parent who is concerned about a school matter. Uh, I had a great conversation with the superintendent. So through you, Council President, and to the Education Chair, I, I would love to hold a special meeting or even if not a special meeting to have a report back uh, and invite the superintendent uh, to talk about uh, the process of if a parent feels they have a concern uh, a, a bullying situation, how they're supposed to address that. What's the chain of command? Who does that go to? Uh, to have Leonard Jihad and his community, maybe Mary, and the uh, civilian review board, the, the the child uh, review board come in and share with us things that they're doing and resources that they have. As I know, you know, uh, I don't have kids, but I, I can only imagine those who do, but this is a tough time. So making sure that all of our parents know what resources with suicide and other things. Uh, depression high right now, I think would be pertinent uh, to hold such a meeting. So at the correct discretion of you uh, in the Education Chair, uh, I would encourage to do that and I'd be willing to help in any capacity that I could have facility at meeting.
Uh, we have, let's continue that discussion. Uh, Mr. McDowell.
Yeah, I have, I would ju- was just thinking ahead. As we discussed budget season earlier, I was wondering if we've given any thought to what that schedule will, will, will look like. Um, over the last year, I think probably all of us have experienced more demand for our time as things are digital. Um, and, and people feel that we are more uh, accessible via Zoom. So uh, has there been any thought to a, a budget schedule? Is there, is there a potential that we can get a rough schedule a little bit earlier on this year?
Um, not as of yet, but I'll uh, uh, we, you know, I, well, the first key component is getting it from the administration. So I'll talk with them about their uh, I'll talk with Mr. Jackson further about when we can expect the budget. And then we'll start putting it together. So we can rough out kind of a
Yeah, no worries. I mean, I, I figure once we get the budget, we're gonna be focused on the budget. So it would be so awesome to have a schedule before that point. Um, we know when the deadline is. So a, a rough schedule will be super helpful, even if it's just like rough days of the week. Thank you.
Mr. Caesar.
With uh, civic clerks starting up soon, can we possibly get a copy of the uh, committee assignments and the committee chairs sent to us soon?
Will do. All right, folks. Um, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn at eight thirty.
Oh, no.
I can't.
Moved by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. McDowell. All favor adjourned, please indicate by saying or showing aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? We adjourned at eight thirty. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
You travels.
You well.